Okay, good evening, everyone. We'd like to reconvene our regular meeting of the City of Angels City Council, meeting for Tuesday, July, June 2nd. Will you please stand and join me in a pledge to comply?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for what it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Earlier, earlier tonight, we had a closed session where we received an update from our legal counsel on a current lawsuit, and I would like to report that no action was taken as a result of that update. And we will now move on to approval of the agenda. Is there any council member, member of staff, or someone in the audience that wishes to remove an item from the agenda? If so, please so state.
I will be approving the agenda.
Okay. There's a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. The next item is staff updates. Each of the council has received a consolidated staff report. Are there any questions of any member of the staff by council people? That particular item doesn't require any action, so we will move on to council updates, and I will begin to my left with Councilwoman Forendal.
No updates.
And Councilman Beehill.
I've attended Destination Angels Camp Board Meeting, and then also the WPA.
Okay.
I attended the museum commission meeting on May 21st, and the commission has two openings for three-year terms. If anyone's interested, they should submit a letter to the city hall by June 15th.
Okay. And likewise, on May 21st, I also attended the Destination Angels Camp Board Meeting. The following day, on 22nd, I attended grand opening of the marina at New Malone's Reservoir. And on May 27th, myself and Community Development Director, Planning Director Dave Hamm participated in a TV interview for public television conducted by Joel Metzler. The subject of the interview was the Highway 4 and 49 corridor study, and that should be aired rather soon, I would hope. No further council updates. The next item on the agenda is public comment. This portion of the meeting is reserved for people wishing to address the council on any matter not on the agenda. State law prohibits the city council from acting upon matters not listed on the agenda. Matters raised by the public will automatically be referred to staff placed on our next meeting agenda. Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to address the council? Please come to the podium, state your name and address.
Hello, my name is Candy Myers. My address is PO Box 654, Angels Camp, California. And I would just like to make a quick announcement that our Angels Camp Farmers Market will be opening up for the season this coming Friday from 5:00 until dusk, and it will run every Friday through the summer until the end of September. And I wanted to take this opportunity to invite the city council to come visit our market along with all our guests and, of course, your families. We have entertainment, hot foods, I have new food vendors this year that I'd like to just share with you, and we also have crafts and other entertainment. This year, we're going to have a little more theme nights, we're calling them. We're going to have a kids' night, we've got a juggler coming, and it's going to give juggling lessons and games for children, I'm hoping to have a petting zoo, and lots of kid-friendly food. Amquah Bank is one of our sponsors this year for the Farmers Market, and they will be bringing their ice cream truck and giving away free ice cream. So, I think that'll be fun. Then also, I plan to have chefs' night and invite local chefs down and have some cooking demonstrations. I also am planning a Living Green Night, and to highlight organic foods or fresh, healthy foods, and also, along with sustainable building, farming, whoever I can get down there, and we'll be promoting that throughout the year. One exciting feature I would like to mention here is that we have now been approved to accept CalFresh EBT at our market. We are the only certified market in three counties that accepts EBT, and so I think this is, this is a great opportunity. We'll be bringing more people to the market that can't necessarily purchase fresh foods, vegetables, and fruits, especially from a Farmers Market. So, that is exciting. So, I want to thank you for your time.
Great. Thank you, Candy. We enjoy the hard work you do, and there was a great article in today's Calaveras Enterprise that really described a very exciting season.
Thank you.
Anybody else in the audience that wishes to address the council?
For a good start, I'd like to give you something as an introduction and information about who I am, and possibly try and add to it as much as I can.
You'll just state your name and address for the record.
Okay, my name is Bill McManus, and I'm not from Angels Camp, I'm from up the hill at Hanford Hill on Cougar Ridge Road. By way of introduction, and the pamphlet or the flyer I just gave you will have my contact information on the top. This, so you know some of the background of what I do, I'm the founding member of the Calaveras Project, which has been involved in projects throughout the Calaveras County for a long time. Comes and goes depending on the issues. I'm also the county coordinator for Tooluma and Calaveras County for a statewide organization known as CALM, which is Citizens Against Legalization of Marijuana. Our goal is to educate the public, to educate our leaders, law enforcement, whoever we can reach, about the ongoing efforts to deal with the problem of marijuana in California. Just as, just as we were getting going on the statewide effort, the Board of Supervisors for Calaveras County in mid-April threw all of the citizens of the county and possibly Angels Camp under the bus when they decided to do nothing about a grow ordinance that was being considered for Calaveras County. Apparently, they don't seem to worry too much about the safety of the public, they don't seem to worry too much, especially about the safety of our children. The main purpose behind CALM is to protect our young people. They're the most vulnerable people group to be negatively affected by marijuana. So, we've now had to stop our efforts with the county for a while and broaden our efforts and try to reach out to cities and counties and church groups and service organizations, whoever we can, to get the word out that you don't have to be afraid of marijuana. We can keep it out of the community if you want to, and that's what we're here to do. I've been working with the school districts. Angels Camp being a special place because you have two major schools in your city limits. What we're keen to find out where their drug programs are at, drug abuse, things of that nature, and I'm proud to report that for most of the schools that I've talked to, and I haven't been able to get at the Calaveras School District yet, they have very robust drug education programs. What they all seem to want and what they don't have right now, with the exception of Angels Camp, is a school resource officer. So, our efforts now are to convince the Board of Supervisors, Calaveras County, to fund at least two full-time SROs for the county. Now, I know that the jurisdiction of Angels Camp is different, but we would like to see a concerted effort, an effort of cooperation where the SROs can share information, share resources, and we can get our kids protected and get them into intervention. It's not to bust on kids, it's to try to help them out. So, anyway, that's what my organization's all about, that's what I'm doing here. I've been working with the City of Sonora as well, and they're moving ahead with thinking about an ordinance there. And all I can tell you, and I'll close, I think my time is probably up, if you think about touching the marijuana issue with an ordinance of any kind, I would caution you that you are going to be grabbing a hold of a tar baby, and really, the only way you can get through it is to ban it altogether, and you have the authority to do that. Any regulation or ordinance that you write, as tight as you think it is, will have holes in it. We've seen it over and over again, all up and down the state, so that would be my warning to you. So, I hope you do do the right thing for the people of Angels Camp, and thank you for the opportunity.
Great. Thank you, Mr. McManus. Is there anybody else that wishes to address the council? With that, I'll close the public comment period, and we'll move on to the feature business program. And the first item on the agenda is a presentation by Destination Angels Camp.
Let's go ahead and take a sister moment. Just leave us here. I don't think so. I don't think so. Who's that?
Well, good evening, I'm Bob Trincaro. I'm the Chair of the Board of Directors of Destination Angels Camp. Mayor Colm, members of the council, and city staff, fellow citizens, it's my privilege to be able to present a third-year report on Destination Angels Camp. And let's see, we do, good, we're up. Let me place this in context just slightly before we get going, I want to thank the American Medical Association for helping keep us intact this year. We lost our very valuable member in Dixon Collins, our treasurer, in October, and both the CEO and myself have spent many an hour in doctors' offices trying to overcome certain infirmities and difficulties. Despite that, we still have a third-year report to provide you, and I think I'm impressed by the amount that's been accomplished, given the things that we've, we've had to overcome, which shows, I guess, that an organization is all about everybody and not simply about the leadership. Let's go to the first that. We view this as a year of notable progress, and we start out by saying, we've created a solid foundation. As you recall, it's taken us a couple of years with your help and cooperation, and we've managed to establish ourselves as an entity in the community, and we have a physical entity at this point that is, allows us to function. The offices, as you probably know, most of you have been in them, are across, are around the corner from here in the building that's across from our local bar. I'm gonna try and keep a little levity in this as we go through it. Our board is 18 strong, we've added six new members, everyone is active and contributes, and we have all of our promotional materials in place. And I think most of the first year, our struggle was to try and get these things done. So, we're pleased to have that sort of a base, that sort of a foundation. Go to the next. How do we get the work done? With our board members, we have the equivalent of two and a half full-time executives a year. I think that's really an underestimate, it's probably more than that frankly, but we have at least that. And we've managed to come up with some added services. We have a marketing and public relations consultant, effective as of the middle of this past year, and we have a part-time deputy executive director that's come on as of June 1st. Those are very important because those mean, at this point, we have the capability of some follow-through. In the past, when you're working with strictly a group of volunteers, while you may have two and a half full-time executive equivalents, getting people to do the right thing at the right time isn't always easy. So, can we go on, Ann? Okay. We view ourselves as a well-run organization. We received two clean financial audits, and the new audit starts 2014, 2015 audit will start July 30th. And as you know, it took us almost two years, we received our 501(c)(3) tax exempt charity status from the IRS. That was a two-year project handled in-house, and I think a great deal of that credit goes to Ann Forrest. We are, as you know, a public-private partnership, and the community backing that we receive is significant and sets us aside from many other organizations in small towns like this. We went out to the community and asked the businesses to participate and become stakeholders in this effort to create more economic development in Angels Camp. And we've had, we have 25 local businesses who participate, they have a three-year commitment for at least $1,000 a year to be contributed toward our operation, operating budget. Like anything else, there are some advisory members that come and go, there have been more than 30 businesses that have participated in this. At the moment, we have 25. Our two newest members are Ironstone Vineyards and PJME just signed on. And that's, that's a terrific addition for us. So, as a public-private partnership, we respect the fact that we represent the city, we try and keep the city absolutely in the middle of everything that we do in the loop. The city, as you all know, contributed $69,000 in 2014, 2015. We're about prepared to come in with a budget request for this coming year. We expect it to be less than that for this coming year, although the figures are not And we do have substantial city representation on the board, Mayor Colm, Dave Hamm, and Michael McCattan, and Scott Beehill are all members of our board. It would be difficult for us not to have the city's input on any item. Major achievements. When we started this process, one of the things that we said was critical, and one of the things that we were able to convince the business community on was the fact that we needed a business recruiter, that as a volunteer group, it was going to be very difficult for us to ever sustain any kind of effort that could bring in additional businesses to this community. Not that all of us wouldn't be trying, but we wanted someone who was professional, who was connected, and who could begin to create a funnel for us that would load some businesses in as prospects and allow us to court them and to see what we could, what we could do about expanding the business climate here. And as of last September, we signed on Randy Starbuck as that business recruiter. All of you have had experience, at least one experience with Randy, I think he's made a couple of presentations to this group. But he brings on, I said September, I'm sorry, it was November. He brings on a great deal of experience. His firm is called A to B Consulting. Randy's last position was as the Director of Economic Development for the City of Elk Grove. He's had more than 30 years of economic development, and we sat down with him in November, developed a one-year work plan, asked what he thought were the things that we needed in order for him to be effective in beginning to recruit businesses for this community, and there were a number of them, and we have since been working on providing those, we'll go through that as we continue this report. But we also asked that he begin to zero in and focus on specific businesses from specific areas before the year was out, and he's beginning to do that in the second half of his first year appointment. And that's the defined work plan. So, one of the first things was to find a city planning approval process, and he's worked with the planning department and with the city administrator to ensure that we have a planning process that is amenable to facilitating and attracting new business to make things as efficient as possible. Come on in. I guess it's okay for me to invite them.
Absolutely.
Hi. Second aspect of this, in order for him to be effective, was, hi Sheila, Melanie, come on in. Destination Angels Camp and ATBA has just arrived.
They're all late and think we're close.
And the planning department. Okay, and the city engineer, we're all here.
I thought you guys were close.
Hi, Dan. So, in terms of the work plan, there were several things that were important from his perspective and from all of ours. One was to try and refine a planning process that would allow for efficiency and be attractive to prospective businesses. The second was to collect city statistics that would allow him to be able to create the demographic picture of who we are and what we're about in order to attract businesses, and then to build relationships with brokers, developers, and property owners. And he's done that with several developers and a couple of brokers already. And then, lastly, we said, but despite all of these great plans, you need to be flexible, and when opportunities arise, and we are aware of them, or you are aware of them, just jump on them if they don't happen to be in the linear sequence of our plans. And he's been good at that. Again, with respect to the work plan, defining the drive timing and consumer statistics that are necessary in order for you, for us to present ourselves to a possible business and to say, what's the buying power within 20 minutes of Angels Camp? What's the, what's the revenue spent? Who spends that revenue? Those kinds of statistics have been developed through a set of data that was first invested by, as a CDVG grant by the city council, and it's some years back, called a Buxton Study, and was recently updated. And Randy is someone who's highly conversant with the capabilities of that information, and has been using that to create portraits of this community relative to particular kinds of businesses that are out there. Obviously, if you speak to any kind of a national firm, any kind of a regional firm, numbers talk, and they're interested in knowing what the numbers are for our area. And frankly, our numbers don't look terrific compared to many, many other communities, but we do fit certain slots and certain niches, and now we have those somewhat pinned down so that we can come up with profiles and begin to sort precisely the kinds of people that we might have a chance with and we can talk to. In fact, there are a couple of national organizations that he is talking to at this It's also supported by other databases. Action to date. Again, business recruiters contacted 30-plus retailers, both local and nationally, again with numbers in hand. He's met with 12 brokers and developers. He attended the ICSE, Monterey, and Cal Ed conferences on DAX behalf, which is the first time we've had a real presence at those. He did come away with a number of possible leads for further discussion from those conferences. And as we've said, all of us have some reservations about the Buxton research in terms of the limitations of the input data, but when you look at it relative to what goes on in the industry, it is the currency that is used within the industry to talk about, about how to develop property and what the profiles need to be and what they need to look like. And so, while we may have some reservations about, about the data, it's the best there is that we can get our hands on. He has provided input, as most of you are aware, on the 4 and 49 study. He's able to say, you know, look, if you're really interested in that kind of business, then you're gonna have to figure out how to get access in Highway 4, somewhere beyond where you have it at the moment. Things that simply reinforce what we already know, but provide a kind of affirmation or contribution that is real in terms of the development community out there about what it's gonna take if we're gonna make some of those developments happen. And recently, he's found $3,500 in grants for DAC, and I can talk more about that a little bit down the line. The second thing beyond a business recruiter that we wanted to make sure that we were able to produce was a property database. It took hiring a consultant, Amy Augustine's firm, to produce the initial database, but we have something that is a unique, a unique form of information that many communities would die for and not all communities have, certainly. We've developed a complete database of all properties in Angels Camp, zone commercial, industrial, business attraction, and expansion are really hat in hand with having that kind of information available. The, you know, you might think that multiple listings would provide you most of that, but it really doesn't. There are an awful lot of properties out there that aren't listed, there are a lot of properties out there that are zone commercial, but really aren't on any market whatsoever, and aren't being used necessarily for that purpose. But having an inventory at least of all of those allows putting pieces together and segments together so that when you speak to a particular developer about their needs, you have the ability of looking at properties and saying, yeah, I think we could do something for you. Ah, yes, and so there is a page out of the database, and I'm not gonna pretend to go through this, there are many of these pages in the database, but it does profile each piece of property in terms of who the owners are, what the current classification is, what the square footage is, whether they're interested in leasing, renting, or sales or all. And then furthermore, furthermore, I'm not sure, there are some other things that are on there that I can't read for the moment. There is a platform being developed so that makes this information much more available to the user, and it will be publicly available once that platform is fully developed, and it'll allow anyone who has an interest in looking at pieces of property or looking for a particular development to be able to access this information. You have a key component for something like this is you have to keep it current, and that's something that we are working on along with Dave Hamm's office as a way of being able to maintain the accuracy of the database as time goes on. You can imagine how fluid this kind of information is. Third component of Destination Angels Camp is to serve our businesses. As you know, we've had some grand openings. We've had grand openings this year for six businesses with 10 more currently in the summer pipeline. We had a very nice grand opening at the marina this past Friday, as the mayor mentioned, a number of you were there. There's one coming up Friday for Sugar, our local bakery, and that's at noon time, and it's, the location is the place that was the Chocolate Lady, so hopefully we'll see many of you down there. I'm sure there's a sconer, a sweet tooth sandwich of some kind for everybody. We featured eight businesses at the city council, and there are more in the pipeline. We presumed to use this particular slot for our own business this month, and we began state-of-business interviews, and Randy Starbuck again has taken the lead on this, and that's where we basically go into current businesses that are successful in the community and get, get a sense from them as to what's working for them, what they could use some help on. The first business that he interviewed was Middleton's, pretty well-established, multi-generational business that's been here. And in talking with Bob, one of the first things that Bob mentioned was that the primary customer for Bob comes from Tooluma County, primarily from Sonora, that he gets a lot more business from there than he does from here, but he usually gets business from here once people have tried the big box stores, they can't get any service for whatever they bought, and when the next appliance is due, they'll come and they'll buy it from Middleton's. So, there's a bit of an anecdote to go along with these interviews. He's seeking that information and organizing it, and will begin to build profiles of the kinds of characteristics that successful businesses here have, and also what their needs are. Business incentive. Business incentives, I know you know what the Business Incentive Program is, we've presented it to all of you. It's a one-of-a-kind program in terms of an offer from any community anywhere, and if one were to play it really well, a new business comes into town and takes advantage of all 33 businesses that offer a service or a product, they could save up to $8,000 in opening their new business. There are 33 local businesses that are currently in the Business Incentive Program. We've had seven new businesses taking advantage of it at one level or another. Those packets are available through realtors, bankers, I think David has them also. Okay, and then number five is Welcome Kits, which is something that's, I think all of you have a copy of the Welcome Kits. Are those, are they sitting there, Dan? Yeah, I think you all have one. These, again, are available in the same places, and they allow people who come up here, love the quality of life, love what they see, and want to know more about this area, to be able to pick up something casually, take back with them, and see what is really available to them in the way of services if they want to come up here and open a business. So, those are distributed to city offices, realtors, banks, title companies, the usual suspects. Okay, so we think we're poised for action. We may be, but I can't get the paper out. Here we go. Retention and expansion. Seminars and workshops funded by a $2,500 grant. This grant actually comes from the Central Sierra Economic Development Group, Larry Cope's group, Elaine, I think you probably know something about it. And the intent is to create a series of workshops for potential franchise business owners for both Calaveras and Alpine County. And I don't think the details of it have worked out yet, but Larry is working on the framework for how we do that. There's also work going on for improved cell coverage in historic downtown. I suspect that three years I'll be up here talking about this, and we'll still say there's work for improved cell coverage in historic downtown. I hope not, but I mean, that's the way it's been so far. Obviously, we try and get the issues out before Verizon, but I'm not sure what our level of communication is at the moment. I know we have some going on. We will continue the state of your business interviews. I think Calaveras Lumber is the next one that's up after Middleton's. And the Business Incentive Program expansion hopefully continues by adding additional services and goods that new businesses can take advantage of. And obviously, all those things that we do at the moment, the various kinds of support documents and information documents we have, as well as the database and so forth, continue to be available. Business attraction. The commercial property database rollout hopefully is going to happen in the, we have got a group working on the platform that allows this to be rolled out and used, and I'm not sure what their deadline is. I don't know if we have a firm deadline yet, Anne, do we? Yeah, soon, but they are working on it. Fan trips for brokers and developers, there was $1,000 that was also available by Grant from the Central Sierra Economic Development Group that Randy was able to pick up. This is going to be used to bring up brokers and developers, specifically to look at the hotel project, to see what interest they may have in helping fill those spaces, number one, and then secondly, aim a more broadly, a broader perspective on other properties that are available. And the revised website is also a serious part of our workload for this year. Both the city and DAC, and ACBA for that matter, all need some work on their websites, and if we're really going to get serious, and that's the way people first touch a new community and want to see what's going on. We've got some updating to do, and we're in the process of starting that. The city certainly has a lot of updating to do. And there you have it. And a streamlined permitting process that's going to council, obviously that's something that is a great amenity for us as we try and attract businesses. It's very important. Time is money, as they say. So, in terms of business attraction, Randy's going to continue to reach out to national retailers. As we said, there's two of them that he's in discussion with at the moment, and one of them fairly seriously. We will provide workshops on franchising, as I mentioned. We'll focus on, in terms of his work plan for the past, for the last six months of the year, we've asked him to focus specifically on regional and small businesses in the area. So if there is a successful business in Jackson, or Sutter Creek, or Sonora, and they may be interested in a second store, we'd like that to be the focus of some of the things that are brought into this community. We think those are, in effect, low fruit that could be picked to help fill some of the buildings downtown and help expand the kinds of services that are available to the residents, as well as create a little more attraction for tourists. And our job is to make Angels Camp your place to live, work, and play. I hope we didn't take too much time. Can I respond to any questions?
Thank you, Bob. Any comments, any questions?
Thank you very much.
Well, it's very surprising when you assemble all the information in this type of a format, get it down on paper, it's amazing, all the different things that Destination Angels Camp has on their plate and is pursuing. And being part of that organization, I can see it up front and close, the extensive volunteer hours that are given and the commitment for those on the board of directors to seeing Destination Angels Camp a success. I commend everybody involved. Thank you.
We commend everybody up there participating as well.
Any members of the public that wish to comment on the presentation? Okay. Then let's move on to the second part of the feature business program, which will be Angels Camp Commemorative Committee presentation.
I'm Anne Forrest, 1545 Tryon Road, and I am chairing the subcommittee called the Angels Camp Commemorative Committee. And so I'm here to give you a report on that. Just a little bit of history, for those of you who are new to the council, about, I think it was the 2010, 2011 fiscal year, the city council set aside some money for a group of volunteers to come together and organize an event to celebrate the city's 100th, the centennial of its founding in 1912. And a number of us that participated on that committee to begin with are still on the committee, four years, four or five years later. In, when we set up the first centennial event, we realized that we, the organization, the commemorative committee, needed legal, insurance, financial coverage, and rather than going and trying to develop the 501(c)(3) and going through all that, the Angels Camp Business Association agreed to make us a subcommittee of the association and therefore provide the insurance and legal and financial cover and give us the 501(c)(6) nonprofit status. So, we thank them for that, but we have kept the books of ACBA and the commemorative committee separate. All the funding and everything is done separately. So just as a little bit of background, just to give you an overview of 2014, and I know most of you have attended our events, but we've got a loyal and hard-working committee. They've been there through thick and thin. It's a small group, but lots of ideas. We've had over 100 volunteers. Last year, we saw, for 2014 events, we saw a 16% increase in community sponsorships. Still not a huge amount, but it's growing, and we ended the year with $5,000 in reserves. We're working on a calendar year as opposed to the city's fiscal year, but we had to have enough to carry us through to do the Fourth of July in 2015. Now, the year before, some of you remember, we had the rim fire. We thought we were going to have reserves to get through for the Fourth of July in 2014, and we ate it all up by having to duplicate that event twice in planning. For the Fourth of July last year, we had, I think the last item is the most important, we had really good weather. The year before, we had had, we were at the end of a 10-day, 100-plus heat wave, and we had low attendance, and the people that were there were so lethargic, they didn't want to eat or drink or do anything. But the big thing, the big focus around is first family and veterans. And the salute to veterans ceremony, if anyone hasn't been to it, is really moving and just really gives you a good feeling of old-fashioned America. We saw 90% increase in veterans. I think we'll see even more this year, and it was a really good group. And last year, we combined it with Farmer's Market because Fourth of July was on Friday. Gold Rush Day, we think there were over 6,000 visitors, a slight increase from the year before. They were from all over the world, because people that came to the information booth were from Asia, they were from Europe, and all parts of the United States. So, we'd like to see that continue. We had over 70 vendors, so more than a third more than we had the year before. We're seeing great support this year, and most important, we had good support from the city, and I'm talking about Public Works, about Mary and her team. Julie McManus was our treasurer for the day. Everybody was out, the police, the fire department. It was really, really helpful, and I know they're doing this on a holiday or on a weekend, and we really appreciated it. It went very smoothly this year. This is our, that was our third year, and by nine o'clock, an hour before the event opened, it was so quiet, everybody was in their place, and we were all like, when's the next shoe going to drop? Because it'd been chaotic a couple, the first two years. We had, we had the Italian Catholic Federation at St. Patrick's, did a pancake breakfast for the first time. That was a big hit. They were really pleased. We'll do that again this year. And last year, if many of you remember, we honored the Angels Camp Foundry, California Electric Steel, for 160 years of continuous operation. For 2015, this is our fourth year, so planning is really smooth. We've got a lot of stuff in place. We don't need to create signs and all that. Committee's hard at work. I'd say we're probably about, probably maybe 50% ready for Gold Rush Day, and it's June. The community sponsors so far are up 15% over last year, and we're out beating the bushes, looking for more money. We're looking to add new events and activities, and I'll tell you about that in a minute. But the key thing for this year was that back three years ago for the centennial, the Angels Camp Veterans District provided us with a big donation to buy the brackets and the flags and flagpoles for the entire Main Street. And over the last three years, Public Works has been putting them up and taking them down for all the holidays. We've lost some flags, some of them have disappeared from all different reasons, and they were in really bad shape by the end of last year. So, we washed all the flags and repaired them in January, so they all look brand-new. And we went to the Angels Camp Veterans District again, and they agreed to donate another $1,500, and that allowed us to buy 25 or 30 more flags to replace the ones that were missing, and also to buy storage bags, because over three years, the bags that we had had really fallen apart. So now we have a total of 116 flags that line Main Street for major holidays, and we have all agreed that we'll try to get a group of people who will wash the flags every two years, so that it isn't, it's a big job. Then for the Fourth of July, which is just a month away, it's Saturday, the Fourth of July, there's lots and lots of stuff going on in this area, but it's from 12 to 5 at Utica Park, and it really is, it's free, it's family fun. We have, this year, we're, last year, we had vendors from the Farmer's Market, and that went over so well. This year, we've had people calling to be, from all over, to be a vendor at the Fourth of July, so we are charging a fee, and we hope to have more variety, and obviously food and drink and that. We were unable to get a military band this year, so we are going to have patriotic music, and then the Fabulous Off Brothers, our locally famous band, will provide music for the rest of the time. And then our salute to veterans this year, we'll have Gail Belmont, who is founder and president of Quilts of Honor, and will be making presentations of quilts to veterans. We run an emphasis on Korea, Vietnam, Iraq, and Afghanistan this year, but also paying attention to our remaining World War II veterans. And so, all the usual things. We hope everyone will come. For Gold Rush Day, we're working on that. This year, it's Saturday, October the 17th, 10 to 5 downtown. We are celebrating the 150th anniversary of Mark Twain's 88 Days in the Motherlode, and this is going to be a big deal. We will have two stages, more street entertainment, more vendors, people have already started to sign up, and greater variety. We're working on that. We plan to expand the Gold Rush Village, which was in the parking lot of the visitor's center. We had the miners' tent, and the museum had their tent. We had all kinds of things, but we've got, we hope, a lot more coming. We're going to have a, and that's not antique, but old car show in Utica Park, just to fill that area and give people something to do as they get off the bus and come wander downtown. St. Patrick's, Pancake Breakfast again. Obviously, Mark Twain, and Henry Angel, and Kit Carson, Mountain Men, and a number of others, reenactors and those in costume will be there. We have invited the governor and other, all our elected officials. We haven't heard from anybody yet. And then, this is something new. We have a subcommittee within our subcommittee that's working on Mark Twain. We have Mark Twain himself, Jim Fletcher, who is responsible for the 88 Days in the Motherlode, and we'll have a book that's coming out at the end of this month. And so, we wanted to do a series of activities to celebrate Mark Twain and really emphasize that, but when the committee got together, we probably had two or three pages of ideas on how we could do this and how we could make this an ongoing program for Angels Camp. But specifically for Gold Rush Day, the Angels Theater has said that since they'll get people in the theater during that day, that they would be happy to work with us to have events inside the theater. So we will have music. We're hoping to have the 88 Days film shown again, workshops for kids on storytelling, and some other activities. We are working with the museum to have a special dinner and show featuring Mark Twain and musicians and Gold Rush food on Friday night before, so it makes it a longer weekend, and it brings more of the Mark Twain scholars and visitors because they've got more to do. And we're looking at pole banners and the photos in the downtown this year to really emphasize Mark Twain, and, as well as souvenirs and that type of thing. And then, going forward through the year, we're hoping that we can reach out to some community organizations who might like to do a storyteller's rendezvous, which would be like a literary festival and a minor be like a literary festival, and a miners' do cook-off, and some of those things that really promote Mark Twain. The book and the film are getting a huge amount of publicity all around the world, so we want to take advantage of that. And then finally, in closing, I have to say that we and the people that enjoy Gold Rush Day and Fourth of July really thank the city council and city staff, because without your support, we can't do this. It's a very expensive operation to put on, particularly because of the Caltrans restrictions, and we just simply couldn't do it without your support. So, we thank you very much for that, and I'll be glad to ask, answer any questions.
Thank you, Anne. Any council comments or questions?
Okay.
Well, we are really so fortunate in this community to have the kind of public support for these kinds of activities. These activities really define the character of a community. It shows that the community takes pride in where they live, and wants to celebrate where they live, and we can invite visitors to share in that genre, and we're able to do that without charging the customer, and really keep it focused as a family event, so, thank you.
There are lots of flyers here, has both this information about the salute to veterans, and we really encourage family members to bring their veterans and, and come down for that day. That starts at 1:00, and, and we really want to have them there, it's a, it's a good ceremony. Thank you.
Thank you, Anne. Okay, moving on to, the next item is approval of the consent calendar, and we have one item on that calendar, which is approval of minutes of the regular meeting of May 19, 2015. Is there any discussion of that item, or if not, I will ask for a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Beale, seconded by Councilwoman Fallendorf. All in favor?
Aye.
That motion passes, and we have one item on our regular agenda, that is a public hearing tonight to adopt ordinance number 471, adding chapter 15.28 to title 15, providing an expedited streamlined permitting process for small residential rooftop solar systems. Dave Hanam will make the presentation.
I'm filling in for Steve tonight.
Thank you all.
Well, you don't have a clear room.
That's what I do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight is a public hearing regarding the solar system. At our, at the meeting in, in May, the council weighed the first reading and set the public hearing for this, and to remind you, this is a state bill. We're bringing our ordinance up to state standard in terms of the new solar system rooftop-type projects, in terms of expediting the permitting process, and with that, staff is just recommending that the council approve, approve the ordinance number 471. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer any of the questions that you guys have on ordinance.
Any council questions? And at this point, it'd be appropriate to open the public hearing, and we'll receive testimony or comments from anybody in the audience. So with that, the public hearing is open. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the council on this? Seeing none, I will then close the public hearing. And if there are no further comments or questions from the council, I will entertain a motion to adopt the ordinance.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Beale, seconded by Councilwoman Fallendorf, to adopt ordinance number 471, adding chapter 15.28 to title 15, providing an expedited streamlined permitting process for small residential rooftop solar systems. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That passes on a 4-0, one absent of, okay. Thank you. The last item on the agenda is to review the upcoming calendar. Mary?
Okay, tomorrow, the 3rd, is the COG meeting at the Board Supervisors Chamber, is at 6:30, and Friday is Sugar's grand opening, as Anne mentioned, at 12 o'clock. It's also 9:00 a.m. is the Angels Camp Committee, Commemorative Committee meeting, and Farmer's Market starts that day, so Friday's good. We have the employee safety jamboree and city council jamboree on the tent, the safety stuff. Planning Commission has been canceled, meeting. The LAFCO meeting on the 15th has been canceled, and we're back here at 6 o'clock on the 16th. And that's all we have.
Okay, that concludes our council meeting. With that, we will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
So moved by Vice Mayor Morris, seconded by Councilman Beale, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we are adjourned, thank you.